I hope they not inside this hall. Where you say when I balance that cable, made a meter this hole, when I balance the cable, it will get light. You not part of ETSa. The ETSa where they can't blame. It's true. So, you know they pay for the light, but it will get light. So if we not have 1 million people they way able bypass, 1 million people they use light, government they ain't get for pay. And then, because ETSa not get enough money because 1 million people they don't do that, then we begin get problems. Because for every unit of power where you supply, there is a cost. So if, let's say 500,000 even, not pay and then they use them, then you not go get enough money for buy share and for pay the one they way they provide the power. That now one part of the problem. Then we come now to ETSa as an institution. Yes, we get what we call commercial. Now then for make sure see, everybody when a consumer get meter and that he get power and that they measure that power day and collect the money and account for that money day so that we go able pay. We would they talk about car power. Now then since have they use here, then get machine there, then get people the way they work there, then get all that cost there, now in the inside of that one day. And fear done they go up all the time. So if we not pay then, then they cut off the light. If we all they pay, we all are good citizens there, we all pay we like be. ETSa safe, they account for that one day, then black no go there because we get enough energy for able give everybody. But ETSa the young problem, one, they not able, then SESF get plenty people they will get Yuki Yuki. Now then they help some people there for TIF light. They not able account for all the power where, because what's in the happen is, this car power owner see, then they generate, then they give all to ETSa. They say, hey, now social unit we don't give you none. So at the end of the month, now social amount we will not forgive we for this power. If somebody TIF and is there say not work and they not collect, they not go able get that money there. But go 2-3 months, it will run into millions of dollars. So ETSa SESF not effective. ETSa SESF, some people then they, I'm not going to say now everybody, but some people then they, where money they fashion at their hand. And again, we get what they call technical losses. Then cable they ask away day. Now by sizes then day. And depending on the size, it will carry a certain amount of power. If this one big and the other one where they take from are small, where this one car with heavy power, the next thing, the other one they break down. So when I can see light they come on, it will go off, then they call trip. And if the power where they come up and this one way big, it will go to the one they ways, to the one way is small, it make plenty again for a long time, it will break. So power day, but you not get light because the connection there. So, which it make is difficult for solve the power problem because you, you get for make sure see, all the cable then, then they in line. All the cable. And that you the able collect the amount of power where you supply. But with all participation, with the inadequacies where ETSa get in terms of their capacity for collect, in terms of their capacity for monitor. Now all of that thing they are don't make, we don't become a nation, we encounter them problems there. So we have a part to play and at the beg we make we be good citizens. All the countries they would admire around the world. The only side who side progress day. Now we will not the citizens actually play with our own path. Of course, it difficult, but we go for land for do that. And at that are they ask for, as are they push and reform the ETSa. Because with the work now, the MCC when I hear about them, the money we don't get, most of that they go towards electricity. And after that, we get for make sure see, ETSa with the reformer in such a way and that process they on right now. And we don't call them as the savvy people them, we don't do work plenty side around the world, they don't come look inside ETSa and they don't make recommendations there. And right now we the act on that thing there. So I go ask you now for be patient small, when I go, when I go to get small, small blackout and then other things there. But we not say for the stop for the TIF me light so that we all go get light.
I've been say, I've been tell somebody say now the past SESF now they in charge of energy and they assured and say, big reforms and they come and you go transform the sector. Your Excellency, brand new airport, Kenne Makhailan, who Bandajuma, Pujiau, hillside bypass, number 2 Lomly, Tokyo, plenty, plenty bridge them as well way under your government. You don't do so much in infrastructure. But not to one thing we would talk about often, not to thing we can take credit for as a government in terms of roads, bridges, we don't build probably more than any other government, at least in the recent history of this country. One question we plenty people get. People from Mayamba, Pujiau, Matru, Falaba and many other here, the one who do a bar. The road they will they build there, then bridge they will they build. What's in your commitment for let them finish them? All man say the one let you would done. So the big question on infrastructure, now your commitment for come, they would in this.
Thank you very much again. Where we come, I say we not a human capital developing government. Now then at the center of with thinking of everything we would do. And plenty when I don't see, luckily now when I self talk and say, any way I talk, I did do them. That means say, I not a surprise you now also. Well, now the minister don't make, I the, me secret don't come on I do. I be one for surprise you to now, winner. Towards the end of me administration, make I tell when I say, now me not the infrastructure, precedent. In addition to be in human capital, the number of bridges they will don't build from where we take over, over 60 years ago independence, no government not build that. Then they, in terms of the length of the roads they will don't build, no other government not want they do them. And we the steal the bill and I want for assure all the communities, including the Matru, Bo, Benducha to Baya Junction and many other Pujiau, we the continue and we go finish them one day there because we, development partners then, don't know say, we sober and what's we they do, we the build the roadside for connect communities then. In fact, because we the, we, we don't do bridges then, we side ferries that be done there, over 5 of them now, then they, then they go on. And maybe early next year, we go finish them bridges then they, they don't, the World Bank. Tom Parry included, Seno included, Wajibu, that bridge where they included, Kailan. And we don't get 4 more, the World Bank don't say, you are serious, they don't give 4 more bridges then. So and then bridge then they, now not to dance, not, not to call vote at the table now. The other one they be the big call vote, they say now bridge they be. Are they talk about bridges, everyone, Rockberry Bridge when I say amen, the one where they be they use, now make I not broke a more, I left on there. That one there now, now museum piece, man, nobody not broke a more. So, maybe one for surprise you now. What we now they say, human capital, human capital, we will calculate everything we don't do because infrastructure is the backbone of sustainable development. We get for link up with Falaba, Falaba Road they go on. As we speak, yes, we get for make sure say, then say be part of Fritong. If they get with, then they do a lot of agriculture yanda. They able take them goods and bring their car to Fritong, you know, and able go back. Same now, we don't go beyond Kailan, we the go towards Coindo. So, we can, me can talk before I do, but this time here, I be say I did do them, then I go tell when I later, but me waste don't come on I do, so make I be get explain. But I go see do more so that we not say, because infrastructure not just a basic necessity for development, not a thing we for boast about because we need them for make, make with people then be part inclusive in this process we call development.
Well, I allow clap for His Excellency because that commitment there a huge one. Most people don't know say, in terms of commitments to infrastructure, it on match, on match in the history of this country. While they talk about human capital, they passionate about them, he still they build the road. And for the family, we send all their question them from Mayamba, Pujiau, all over and the people in our bond, including the road where they, where they lead to His Excellency in your bad place, the news is good, he go completes the road them, Inshallah. Your Excellency, I want to move to the economy. This now, one, here we, we get plenty question. In the first few years of the government, you meet inflation from 19%, I think you reduce them to single digits, 9%. Since then, you confront some major headwinds. Global pandemic, the war on Ukraine, the Middle East crisis. Plenty, plenty economic challenges, we feel not alone, plenty people feel. Prices go up, the dollar hits, billion effectively on a free fall. But you still manage for hold this economy together. You pay salaries, you don't stabilize the economy, reduce inflation from in high of over 50 to now within the 30s, I think the Minister of Finance there are. People want for know, with all this stability and all that, what's in your vision for truly improve the economy and improve people their life, for let people they be prosperous? This is a big question we come a lot.
Thank you very much, definitely. In fact, this is not the biggest, biggest question because everything as we they talk about actually hinge on the economy. What's we don't do since we come, they should say, I've been promised when I say, efficient management of the economy. That will be the hallmark of me own administration. So before we know say corruption was endemic and unchecked in this country. Before we come, then SESF, they were, the government way be there before. The APC, they been get, they be there out of program with IMF. IMF say we don't care, it's who they go, then come away. Then SESF declare austerity before we the come. And that makes some box of the 90 now, that sector day. It take we nearly a whole term, the term we been come, every inch of this land where you call Saloon, if you don't have that exploration license. Any south side map, if you, if you enter the possible test, now me get that license area. Because they don't, we don't shake and give everybody, then what you call hog, then take them license and they, then they go parade around the world. Then the individual some way succeed, then they get money. Because they talk say, now me get the richest gold area, now me get the richest diamond area. Then they get money. What's we don't do, we don't cancel all them license there. Plenty people they grumble. Now we don't say the government SESF, don't set up what we call wealth fund. This for mineral wealth fund, particularly. This wealth fund there now in the manage government your interest. That one day, now Motamande your interest, now in the yanda. So if Diamond there are today, we the protect this area, we hand over to the mineral wealth fund. And we the pray for the one they we did not the mineral wealth for, made it safe like Motamande. Made a work for Motamande. So, that community where they come overseas, they say one come, we can now go meet the mineral wealth fund. The mineral wealth fund go say, this, whatever you do, we get 60%. Before, now where they don't mind everything, they don't direct. Now we say, that money we don't break cancel, when they come over. Now make they don't bar at that, they say election for the again midway. So say this trouble now you cause them for yourself. Ladies and gentlemen, no election or the 2028. I hear people then they talk about electoral justice. If you want electoral justice, you go to the court. Trapata is not a give electoral justice. They not get the power, me not get the power, the Supreme Court. And he open, we not have a locker. But there, nobody know one they go there, but they say they want justice. They say I want interest, but you know they go outside the rest there. Now in this one. So I just want for appeal to brothers and sisters, we have a country to cater for. We forgive time for development, which is what the people need. We are lacking behind by far and therefore we for double with steps, if possible, triple with steps there so that the people, we enjoy the benefit of all these thing we would they talk about. The economy, the economy, I don't talk about it, we economic management team, where I go say thank you to because the World Bank and the IMF don't commend them. And not to that no more. The time where no wahala not been there in the world, where this country been the experience a boom in, in, in commodity prices. Some month be they come, pay, people salary not been there. From the day we will come, no salary problem not there. All the picking there where they go school, when I remember say we the pay for them. Each one of them, we the pay for them. Now free for the picking there and the parents there, but you know free for we. We get for go to the Ministry of Finance for pay for every picking where they go school because schooling not for free. So what we say free, now only for the picking there and the parents there, but we in a free for we. But because we know the, 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 the importance of education and the need to make it inclusive for even the poorest of the poor, now make we tie with order and say, this one would grown under the weight of the, the payment, but we the pay for every picking for go. So the management of the economy now in the make impossible for me to pay salaries every month. Now in the make impossible for me we pay for all them picking there where they go school. Now in the make impossible, in addition to the supporter we they get from global fund and others, for make we able bring medicine now this country. So, the economic team definitely, under the circumstances, if not be any other, it don't crumble because indeed, we have not been lucky with the happenings around the world. And the one day, we see what they happen. We day, we don't go through election, we the try for, prepare for the next phase. We get a military coup. And then, every now and then, we get people where saying as through reunions, then your, the mammy cost is small, but in the 30, we the come tomorrow. One of the, one of the most difficult questions we are don't answer, not from journalists. Now from me own picking, on the 19th last month, now he asks me, daddy, I for go school today? I say wait here, Paul. It's a teacher be say, may I ask because they be say problem go there. Not to so we picking there for there, we not for bring the people, war done done at this country. People then they sit down, they they talk say, we the car attack the State House, now for kill this person, now for kill this minister, kill the First Lady, kill this other person. Not so this kind thing we need now. May we bring development. For me, that question have been the most difficult and it take me some time for, I just tell and say, go school. Nothing not there happen. Not to so we picking there, they would picking there, we not for bring them up in fear.
Your Excellency, I think you don't really preempt the next section when I on peace and national cohesion. And one question we lots of people they ask, from a young man, you don't always choose peace. A member say, where would you grow up early on? You choose, you join the military, but we become a leader. You fend the rebel leader and choose negotiation. Same lecture, despite like I say, multiple coups, instability, threats of violence, you don't always speak dialogue, you don't always choose negotiation. Some people they even mistake that day for weakness. How you don't deal with the threat of instability, especially in context where we neighborhood now here is problematic? How you don't deal over the past, let's say 6 years, with this constant threat? If you feel like there's a bit in drum of a threat of instability, how you don't address that this?
Thank you very much. I think, like other countries, maybe people they need for they go for military training at least one year. Because we taste war, you not want war again. When I watch the one day where they, where they talk about war, they not be ever there near here. They be they hide under bed. We know, we will be there in the forefront. Now by God, in your saving grace make, some of we day so today, many of we colleagues then die at the front and may their souls rest in peace. We know the number where instability they bring come. All this what they talk about, what we now the clap for, what we now want, education, good health system, roads, none is possible without peace, stability. The economists they go tell when I say, they, they get a big term, they say macroeconomic stability before the economy they go before. We, now political stability, peace, now we need, we when a politician there. Some people, where they know say, that one day now the ecosystem where they nurture good governance and make sure say, the country go before. Where they, where they be a fool no more, we the car attack next month on the 15th. Man, nobody not pull market in a door. Ladies and gentlemen, this not family talk. It fine for we the good one there, may we not they let sit down. Few idiots then they mislead we and they they scare we. Now the same country, are they see, people then they go, then buy battery and waiting, then they record, no entity their voice, then they go put up a speaker, then they listen now. That's like you make, I almost want give up. But me, as a young man, I give up my life for this. Luckily, I'm still alive. We not go ever stop for faith for this country. At the battle front and in governance, we go faith for make sure say, the right thing happen. So, where the peace what they enjoy today, where all man be say for the Sangko now day and that the war not go count to an end. In 3 months, now me grab now, I pass pass all over West Africa. Now me go locate Uzay for the Sangko day and make them Bianca out. We start the peace talk, we get ceasefire, then be make impossible for me we get the first democratic election after APC be done room for nearly 30 year one party system.
Fact.
So, I believe in dialogue. Where I call for the Sangko, one of the first paper they way I been get for sign with the Ivorian authorities, now for sign say, not for kill them, now for make it come out, may we engage in dialogue as to how we for done this one, one now. Where the Ivorians then call them, where the Ivorians then call them, where he come off physically, where he see me, they say when I to go inside this room, if you not come alive, then that means say when I don't agree. If you not kill when I say, the problem don't know. Now me and for the Sangko, we know what we talk. So where I be come, from that place, I not talk. I say may we get be to money too. They say it wants stay in our power. I say me know what they done me hate. When I get election, may we get election now or peace later. People they be say, now power I want for stay. I be just want for be judged positively by posterity. I be want give we the opportunity for choose between peace now and democracy later. We choose democracy and we say, may the peace in go can later. And we see how many people then die because I know, what's in internal me, where me and into no more than at that room there. That is part of history where I go write for the benefit of we picking them. So, I don't always, as a soldier, don't seek peaceful means because where you going at the front, where you fight, we will fight all. Who say we end up not table? Not table, we sit down, we talk. From that time they will be don't get peace. The one day where nobody, where be they hide under the table, under the bed, now they make they don't come back, they say they want war. All this talk where they go, first world war, second world war, therefore end up not table. So why you not go sit on that table? Now they go down where the Electoral Commission, we be done declare the result, say Namigo. Then I see. Thank you.
Aye, thank you, thank you.
Using the same processes and procedures where they be declared from twenty two thousand and seven, two thousand and twelve and eighteen. Some we family they say, no, we not agree again. Then when me go get money now, in fact, they don't barantamore. But I just want for tell one and say we because we get clean slate. Now make we not, I've say okay, if when I say we not agree, may we can talk. May the international community be the more around us. This trypatite one at the area about, now Mr. Sebuko put them together. Because I not get nothing where they hide. I not the chief election, I not the chief money, so I not go chief election. At the one day when you chief money, I then the chief election. So after they say, oh, when I not, when I not buy T-shirt, when I not campaign, when I not be get mercy, how you want win election? Okay, so we see engage, we don't talk, trypatite, the result don't come on. Some man see they say where electoral justice not there. Not the trypatite they give electoral justice. The Supreme Court, it then I we Constitution, you know, where it prescribe exactly, if you not say, in two thousand and twelve, when I remember, where some some people then they have be vex for me, not green, not green. With all what you when I talk, I say when I don't vex for me, but I will go to the court. We are accommodate, when I say when I not want listen to me, I say when I I go make when I listen paupa. May we ready for twenty eighteen. That is what leadership is. You people, we are definitely want for make, we not agree. But the rule of law, where they in me, at that time, we still they in me even more. We as a party get a moral obligation for keep this country safe and I go want for appeal to we all. For make we continue for maintain that stance for say the peace of this country depend on we all. And the one day where not agree, engage them in decent dialogue, rationalize with them, put your points across. Even when they not agree before you, you go then at the head say, yes, that man they right. So that make dialogue for me not a sign of weakness. In fact, not a sign of strength because for engage.
Your Excellency, one follow up question on that since you mentioned trypatites. The commitment to the recommendations and implementation of the recommendations. We assure people very briefly on that.
Okay, the trypatite we don't make, it make a lot of recommendations there. But like I say, not so possibly force me. Namigo talk on a bad event, say because of the too much noise and for make we accommodate, we family there. We will go, we will get this process, where we don't call trypatite. If I not be mean now, when I not say we are not mean now, I not they talk about. So the recommendations that we don't come on, without doubt, we the, in fact, we don't begin implement some of the recommendations there. And I want for assure now all say, they they're not different mostly from within the the constitutional review we don't recommend, you know? So we therefore do all of the thing they do for make sure say we get a better electoral system and we get a system where possibly pass. Because you want for grumble now, now I'm go make you grumble. Because what is that we can do, now the thing they where the SPP, the APC, the international community, where experts that we can sit down. Then we agree on as the way forward for reform with system. So that twenty eighteen, twenty twenty eight, where they beat pussy again, you know they say no, I not agree. I saw me, I mean, me in governance are not the only solve the problems of today. Are they also they foresee the other problems they will come and try for solve them. So twenty twenty eight, now for poor one, a people might say, I say when I come, now so with the changes. Because when I do grumble about the electoral system, now we don't change now, when I input the order day. When they go declare results, you not go say again, no, you get disaggregated, we not get aggregated or disaggregated.
So the commitment is complete. In fact, on the day after the trypatite stop be there. The government, a chief negotiator, the honorable chief minister. Bring a paper can a cabinet. The day after, and last week, His Excellency don't direct, it's here in come. Many of we as ministers, they do, with members of civil society as well, we get the media and plenty people. So the commitment, the Kaiser Excellency said, now you set them up and the commitment is real. Your Excellency, I want to talk about something we just mentioned briefly. Hate speech, violent speech, inciting speech. We not say the worst forms of hate speech exists in the forms of people like Adi Bai where they out there. We don't do plenty. But sometimes, sometimes hate speech, they come off from we, on we own side. Insightful speech. Recently, a member of we party, the Syrian People's Party, Chief Kadeiro Kaikai. He go viral. Threatening say if he not be leader, he go bring war come now this country. I not say the police respond, the party respond. But as the leader of the party, as the leader of the nation, people plenty want know within a union response as we leader.
Mr. Minister, you know fine from how they waste some time today. Me and our chief, another outside, that chief they come on. So I go say, Mr. Kaikai. Mr. Kaikai not represent what we stand for. We are one country, one people. And I've been tell now, after the war be don't go on for so long. I initiate the process where end the war. President Kabawe can't take over, the SPP government, they go through a lot from nineteen ninety six to two thousand and two, back and forth. For make we get peace now this country. So SPP don't invest in peace. In fact, that was a term, one whole term lost. Just like how then the one for me we lost a whole term. It don't become a trend now this country. Whenever some people not know we, they make this, I mean, the country, the one for maker on governable. But we, I don't talk him and I go ask the international community for made a support we in that regard. It should not be like that. We should all be committed to democracy. Democracy, you win and you lose. You not go only accept where you win, then you refuse for accept where you lose. What is Mr. Kaikai been talk? He not represent we. And we whether invest in the peace of this country, not go tolerate him. Now make we suspend him immediately from the party and the party's disciplinary organ go get for talk to him and and take the necessary steps whether he deserve for be a member of the Syrian People's Party. So unlike what in other people that be done they do. Unlike what in other people that be done they do for encourage very bad elements there. Because they not want lose a member, they not want made a member they turn against it, or this or that. We get the moral strength and spine for discipline one of we on there according to we disciplinary codes. So the first stage now suspension and the second stage, the disciplinary committee go recommend to we. And we go take that step there. And I want for appeal to all. I don't tell when I say this, I'm a second and final term. The party with normal procedures, with normal procedures, go elect somebody, we could be the next leader of the party and flag here. That is the most difficult thing. We are the clap, but choosing a leader, choosing a leader is the most difficult thing because once you don't elect that leader, they now it might be fun, they show the direction. If you choose the wrong leader, some turn a Jana, may they carry you go. If you choose the right one, if you carry go side, who side you go glad it for daily. When I agenda. From the time we will come, when I see the kind thing they who they do. What in people that they talk before, this man you not go go America, this man the international community. What in they not be able to get from the international community because of what they do, now me they get from them. So the kind way where they be they mislead winner. For make when I go the wrong way, just like how Satan can do. Now they, now they be they do. So time they come again, for make we choose we leader. We therefore think, think and think and choose leader. We not the only win election, but go care this country go and we all now the right direction.
Your Excellency, final question before we few questions from the audience and then we go close. Bet fit from two straight hours of you just talking from your heart, really credible. Saloon in August, they assume the presidency of the United Nations Security Council. My brother, the Minister of Foreign Affairs and International Cooperation, Simutika Badia. We have been small, I think I said the other day, who they do increase there, where they talk about who stands Saloon be the Security Council would have been there, under your leadership. We don't move from being on the table of discussion just twenty years ago on peace and security to now not just being at the table, but leading the conversation. At a very big time for the world, big big issue in the airport, you they go New York and they go preside as the president of the United Nations Security Council. People want know what in then they mean. Put her into context, let people understand what in then they mean, why then this so important to we and what in you hope for achieve with this big, big honor we will get as a country.
Time go come where Saloon go the post story. Now the Security Council. Now few people they go there. For go there, it not easy. But when me come, I've been telling I say I go change the image of this country. I go clean we. Like how Chinua, Chinua Achebe say, he said that Pikiwa is a bit was in hand, he can eat with kingdom. I don't wash me hand. Now that make, when then they vote for we for go now, the Security Council, one one hundred and eighty eight countries there. Eighty eight or ninety eight? Say again. One eighty eight countries in the world. Now they say, yes, when I don't wash, when I am fine, when I fit for can enter this Igba. The last time we have been there, now fifty three years ago, plenty of I will not be done born it. So now story down the phone. So because of how this Saloon now country where few years ago, we were the recipient of the what in they be the discourse that the Security Council. War they under, then don't destroy everything, what we go do, may we send troops there. Today now we now they decide, all the big problem there from Palestine, Gaza to Sudan, to Ukraine. Next month, now Saloon they they in charge, now we the chair that month today. So now that we don't do for now. Now that we don't do because some man go say, wait not come. Where I be they say, I go change the image of this country. We we don't change them, we don't clean them, see who say we did today. We come par, maybe now that I don't talk about Security Council, when at the Igba, when they don't say we for day. Maybe I go talk again, but the majority of the people that are this country, when are woman there? Woman there there? Now the freest country this for woman there, now your country this way they care for woman there, past anybody, by we laws there. Because of the various actions and laws, they who don't think, we are regarded as champions in the world for gender and women's empowerment. When that happened in the past five years. So per corruption, we don't move twenty two places then, spaces. We went and be say, we not Tiffy Tiffy. Tiffy not they don't know. The Motaman, the Motaman character that one day, if that's small, but we know what make you the kapu. If not pinch, you the pinch, but you the afraid say for pinch. Now that we they try for do. So first time a kapu, they be the kapu. So now make when I pick it, they not be they go school, they road, they not they make salary, not they, we now we don't into this fear. If you the tip say you did not say make at take small and you the watch, say, so tell where you the tip now small. We the make sure say we reduce corruption because that they choke development. Because them money then, where people then they lay their hands on, where they use. Now we for the use for make road for now, for buy medicine for now, for pay for now, picking there for go school, for do all the things they may need for do for the people them. So the Security Council now big elevation for we. But not the Security Council no more. Where Africa they sit down, they get what in they call the the African peer review mechanism. Where all the heads of state they with the watch we serve and advise we serve and say, Bo, you go too far under. I just finish for be the chair of that one day. Why they choose me? Again, because we don't clean we image. The African, in fact, the Security Council of the African Union, where they call the Peace and Security. Again, me and a member of that council day. So we not to, of course, the the Security Council of it, I've been telling I say now Igba there. The one day where they don't go sit on there. For me, the Second World War done, and the one day when I be the, where win the Second World War, and then go sit on there and then get privileges. I like we talk to, now one no more, they say no, I not agree, case don't do. Black is don't do. We now, now Africa, me, now me the champion, the cause, for me we change the configuration.
The seating.
The seating of the Security Council because we feel you not they represent we anymore. Because Africa is one point two billion people. And we not represented now the permanent category. Then at the one day where I like when I talk, say, go later, where they say no, now no. We serve, we don't tie with Oja now Africa and all the African heads of state, now you say, now you go to my before for make sure say, then one day they make sure say, you go there. Why are they talk about all of this? Now for make we feel proud, a sense of pride, for more we they stop for the act little, act big and bold. Now the only way we go able succeed now this world. So I the be go now. Make we know say Saloon done the move. And we need the support of every citizen. Now make we do this sort of citizens engagement. And we need, we need when I active participation for support the government so that we go succeed for move, for maintain the forward momentum we don't start.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, I love put your hands together for His Excellency, the President of the Republic, early on, Brigadier Retired Dr. Julius Madabio. What? What an incredible conversation, really. Your Excellency, the technical people then just tell me say, they want that we take a two-minute break, then get a quick Security Council documentary within the show, then we change the battery then that we microphone them, and then we go take four, five questions, and then we, you do one, and then we are done. So let we just get the documentary, who not gets, and then now we can take the mic then and replace, okay, the, it's on agriculture actually, the short documentary is on agriculture. We wanna go ahead and play them, while His Excellency take a few minutes for read.
Mechanization is the way forward, and under mechanical cultivation, we need robust machines wherein, because these are all virgin lands, our lands are not prepared, we need machines that can, that will be purely in charge of land preparation.
These were critical amongst the many challenges the Feed Saloon Initiative declared by the Beulah led government hoped to address, with an ultimate vision to transform the agricultural sector to ensure food sovereignty, create jobs, reduce hunger and boost economic growth in Sierra Leone.
President Dr Julius Madabio, in his bid for a second term in office, emphasized his commitment to a comprehensive initiative called the Feed Saloon when re-elected. The initiative to boost agricultural productivity, to ensure food security and inclusive economic growth, boost food production, reduce hunger and poverty, create jobs, boost export earnings and build resilience in the face of climate change.
Whether you are student, whether you are teacher, whether you are doctor, whether you are minister, you are president, how fast, come in within the next five years, we for able produce enough rice that this country and begin for export. So what we can tell when I now for make everybody know say, the rest of the history yeah, now other people then, we they make that they get richer, then we they make themselves they become poorer, and I work with the say yeah that, oh young people they there yeah, people they there, young man they whether come on in the back, they not get home. Hey, we the Biden see that they, now money we they say, for keep other economies running. Now we don't say, we for make we own economy run, not, this not about chop business no more, and culture now one of the best businesses that the world. If we not do them, we go say for so far.
Prior to the launch of the Feed Saloon agenda, the President Beulah led administration indeed made a record-breaking investment in agriculture, with the procurement of over four hundred machines for the easy rollout of the policy shift, an intervention that signifies the government's seriousness about agriculture, and the creation of a conducive environment for farmers to practice mechanized farming.
The backbreaking task of trying to use poles and cotlases to farm, now we are reducing that. We have machines, we have bought several tractors in the past, and it is our responsibility to take care of those machines, that is something that we are very poor at.
The fifteen lowbed trailers procured by the government to enable swift transport of these machines from the warehouse to the field were indeed a timely intervention. Sierra Leone is not just a nation blessed with natural resources, but it's one that is graced with people's determined spirits and unwavering resilience. This movement is a collective journey where every step taken and policy made gets the nation closer to achieving food sovereignty. Master farmers whose focus is rice cultivation in Tongkolili and Cambia districts, northern region of Sierra Leone, were indeed excited on the launch of the Feed Saloon Initiative.
I feel so good, because first of all, the President's help we bring Boku machine and who they work with, that alone, who not get Sabib hook, we serve they go into farming. And mean now from two thousand and two now, and begin the farming, so if machine then come for later, then come for, and the President say now enforce power, it's a, I glad.
To me, it's not like a dream, because I knew that was going to happen one fine day, and honestly, President Beulah with his vision, with his agenda for agriculture, this country is going to be transformed very, very soon, within the next three years.
Knowing very well the integral role of the private sector, not just as an engine for economic growth, but a midwife of the Beulah led government's agricultural vision, with a key commitment to address challenges such as governance and appropriate risk management, government was swifted through the Food System Resilience Program to initiate a seven point nine million United States dollars matching grant facility for small and medium enterprises and large agribusinesses in rice, cassava and livestock sectors, with a view to the risk business ventures of farmers.
Delighted and really to launch officially the matching grant for the FSRB grant project. Thank you.
The President, Dr Julius Madabio led government, has indeed demonstrated an unwavering commitment to the cause of agriculture in the country. This was visible through the adherence to the Maputo Declaration on Agriculture and Food Security in Africa, a commitment to the allocation of at least ten percent of a country's national budgetary resources to agriculture within five years. Many are of the view that ten percent is still not enough as in comparison to what is budgeted for education.
His Excellency, me first appeal as Chairman for the Parliamentary Oversight Committee on Agriculture, now the fact say, ten percent, now the threshold, now the Maputo Protocol, but ten percent of Saloon budget, now three hundred billion, three hundred billion in United States dollars, now one hundred and twenty-four million dollars.
All right, thank you very much. We just hear he, and he talk about Feed Saloon. Now we get some question then from the audience, we forget one of them with microphones, we hand the microphone over to the people who gets the question then for us. I think number one, Alfonso Mali, Alfonso Mali Civil Society, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much. His Excellency, one for commend you for the commitments, especially in the education sector. Recently, the Ministry of Finance don't make a known to the student loan scheme, say now they go reduce on the SLG, now now student loan scheme, students and for the going for, forgets education. We want for appeal to you say, for increase the boss of the student loan scheme, before we reduce the amount to the beginning of SLG, now they all go fall, so there are one for make that passionate appeal there to you. And lastly, we also want for tell you say, the heights, where the former Minister of Education, we don't take the MBSSE, we want for see that standard they maintain, there is need for again internal dialogue, meeting at that ministry there, all is not well, and anyway last year me talk about education, I'm saying this because it's in a family dialogue, thank you very much.
Alfonso, when I wake in come, me press conference no say, I get one simple rule, now the panel no more at the superstar, why give the microphone, now question for ask, and if I go direct to you, so no briefcase and all. Next, now lawyer Abu Bakar Kamara, Barista Abu Bakar Kamara.
Yes, go ahead, sir. Yeah, Your Excellency, thank you very much, and our dynamic Minister of Information, this is on President said, and then you, Your Excellency, you go down in history as the first President, we don't hold down or miss with the people there. On that note, Your Excellency, we want for comment on the Constitution. As lawyers, actually me now the Assistant General Secretary of Sierra Leone Association, and then successive governments don't promise for review the Constitution way to some extent and to the estimation of certain people, don't become redundant, but they don't feel in that direction. But we don't see how passionate you there, and you don't take practical steps for lead to the constitutional review. Your Excellency, sir, we want for know, as citizens of Sierra Leone, what in you hope for achieve in this direction for us having a new Constitution. Thank you, sir.
Yusuf Swari gets a question on census. Yusuf Swari gets a question on census. Yes, it there me do here.
Hello, me famo there, good evening, and good afternoon, President Beulah, me my question where they try for ask, now about the census where you don't plan, so this census where you don't plan, I want for know from you.
Yeah, go ahead with the you, you want know about the census? Use the mic.
Hello, okay. So like, will you for understand if this census where the President Beulah you don't plan, whether, how you get for do and where you get for be inclusive and credible?
Thank you, thank you very much. Ibrahim Alpha Jalloh gets a question. Ibrahim Jalloh, where Ibrahim? It there, on my right hand. All right, go straight to the question, please. Yes, go ahead. The microphone can't, can't down small, and turn the microphone on, please.
Good evening, fambolem, and of course, my question here so tonight, Your Excellency, sir, what is the current status of the medical emergency response for KUSH?
Thank you very much, and the KUSH, the correct status. Memona Tusei gets a question on performance contract, Memona Tusei.
Thank you very much, Mr. Minister, and good evening, Mr. President. Our humble old Minister in words them, today now the happiest day for make a tin up and talk to me President. My question here is, we see you been don't appoint you ministers them, then all of a sudden, we see you call them back in a State House, forgive them performance contracts. We as citizen of this country want know, whose measure you get for use for grade them, sir? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. You want know if we get for pass or we get for fail? Chief Minister can say we will deliver, would you pass? Joseph Insideu gets a question on women and girls. Joseph Insideu.
Thank you very much, Mr. Minister, President Tokandu Beulah, thank you for this opportunity, for like ask me question direct to you. I want for celebrate you first of all, for all the achievements where you don't embark in the past couple of years, education now one key thing for me way, our whole of high esteem. Me now the founder and CEO of Teach For Saloon, Teach For Saloon, they recruit young graduates, go put then at them village school, outside teach at the no one for go. Inside the village school and there, me chief them, I want for greet them especially for Lord Anosay, one of the challenges there where we they get, now the aspect of FGM. His Excellency, the President don't make a easy for we, the woman them, for me we come before, thirty percent is good, they don't pass the act for child marriage, now another issue where they affect education. But this issue do yeah, I want make a disclaimer, national weight man column, another against the culture. Me now Madingo, me they shabo picking, I like me culture.
All right.
Question I want for ask, His Excellency, the President, I want for know, as the Tokandu President, if he still committed for say, he go try for put, not a ban, but some kind measure for small picking them before then they put them, because some picking and then they pull and ask for, carry them go up and then society.
Thank you. All right, so just for be clear, just for let people they know, every single one of them people here have been sending question online, and we select them for come, now be part of the LaFol, we be transparent on this, as soon as I see, now citizens question them, will not be one said chaotic conversation, yeah, but these are questions our citizens have asked, and are also consistent with plenty of the question they would receive online, so we can now to His Excellency for respond. Your Excellency, the question there, one, Alfonso say, for maintain on education, I think you don't talk a lot about that. Two, constitutional review process, your commitment and why that important? Three, census, inclusive and credible. Four, KUSH, you don't already address that, so I think, and then ministers them, I the judiciary, and then this question specifically about some two you don't talk about before say, as it come to the issue of FGM, you get a middle ground, say, what's now for picking them, then you committed for make sure say, we stop them, so now that, Joseph want know if that commitment they still stand, over to you, sir.
Thank you very much, maybe I start from the back, the last question, we now about FGM. We are all captives of our culture, some cultural practices outdated, harmful, some people will say, but you don't change culture overnight. Therefore, therefore, we get lost them, where they say picking, we not, we not reach eighteen years, nobody not for force him, for join him, for do FGM. I think that now already a commitment on the part of government. We not interfere elsewhere around the world for changing the culture, we the allow for phase out because we be this a harmful, but we want make the picking reach the age, where in they decide whether it a continue for doam or another continue for doam. This matter has been politicized and the, 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 where you say, I be don't commit, I not one day commit now this country, say, I the doam, I the protect the children, but I the make sure say, when you don't reach eighteen, you go make a choice. So the law now for make sure say, you are eighteen before anybody, what in we need for do, now the enforcement, for roll out a system or structure for make sure say, nobody not join anybody by society, especially the gap picking there, when they not don't reach eighteen, for make consent, for give consent to make them, make them doam. So that is what I will say. There's a lot of politics around it, but me, in as much as they are there at the pinnacle of politics, I don't play politics with the lives of people, let, and now we know say, a culture, now a diff, in fact, where I say captives of our culture, you don't even know what, some people they do now, they not even they know what they doam, it becomes second nature, and therefore, for go convince people they under, now with villages there, we make, make the one they way they do advocacy, give it time, so that we go convince and face. So that we go convince and phase out rather than giving us sanctions for doam. Because it go make, we break the relationship between we and the people them. We know how we they doam, we they carry them, we they put necessary laws there, so that we go finally, it will phase out with time. But if we say we they doam the other way now, maybe we not go even before the next election.
Yes, sir. So the question next now on ministerial performance and just for say on this question, the Child Rights Act, very clear cabinets without approve that. And a part of the process where the government of Salon, like I, his excellency say, they take that step there and then not to law they change this alone. Now for bring the people along and for learn with culture. Your Excellency, as contact, how you the judge me?
Of course, um, you know say, where we get a government, most times, most people, the people, the way they carry, the biggest blame are the president and the ministers. And then they eat all the money, and then they do this, and then they do that. We, because we want to perform, we get an obligation for deliver public services to, we know all. Me want not go able doam, so they appoint ministers, deputy ministers and other senior, uh, um, um, people. Now the various departments and agencies of government. But we not go just left and there. We feel say we need a tie then, for tie then down to setting benchmarks there. We are supervised by the chief minister, we don't say every minister, we want for know this, you know, we have the medium term national development plan. Inside this plan here, now this now you own obligation. By so so date, if we don't able move either now law, you the change or now, now, um, 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 how you call them? For make sure say people they know, waiting we don't pass publicity about certain things then like, um, two weeks ago, I believe, Moyamba. For make we publicize the medium term national development, we forgive then time. So that they not just take and say, oh, me and minister are just carry the name. No, you get setting rules for play and with the give you time. And we want for know what you do, where they contribute to the whole national plan for make this country go before. So, just like, where you want increased performance, you want, human beings are lazy by nature. Until you set goals for them, they not go always move. Now that we don't do for the minister them, so that then go, let's have go move and perform the duties. So that at the end of the day, we go obloom together and say, now this we do for now, we don't come up from A, we are at B now. Because of the collective and cumulative effort of all of these ministers.
Thank you, Excellency. Uh, as I say, chief minister can say, it make sure say we deliver, so we will deliver, not so sir. Exactly. Um, next question now about census. During the last development partners meeting, you mentioned and announced the considerate term for hold the every ten year census. How you to make sure say the census are inclusive and credible? And why make important follow all census now?
Well, the body were responsible for those census, nine statistics already on. Then get procedures and processes where they be don't establish from time immemorial. We know they change them one day. So, this inclusive thing where they talk about, not to we be exclude anybody. When I've been there now this country, we as a government get right for say, we, they do census. Then a medium, then at the midterm census, then we get this statutory one after every ten years. When I like this one, where we don't say we they can't do. If you say, may they not count the young people there, because not to you they doam, would that exclude incoming? So, I want for make, we be good citizens and engage. Where, where, um, during the term of the APC, we all come out, then country. Where time come for make we doam, they say we are not agree. They are dividing all the time. All the time. So, sensor they not get for go say, no, you young who's, maybe you not red or green. No, every household now this country, then they go run for count everybody and the procedure is now based on international practice. Not for say Salon, they set your own procedures and processes. No, now waiting that they do around the world for make sure say, everybody inside the country at that time, they account for them. So, uh, the, this thing about inclusivity, I don't know who say they come out, because it is by nature inherently inclusive. Uh, they, we they try for capture everybody in detail at that point in time. I go assure you now say, under me leadership, it not go vary, it will be even more inclusive.
The census go be inclusive, they never go now some who's they jump. All man go be counted and at the commitment now they, because a part of the development foundation. Finally, your excellency, the question of the constitutional review, we don't they para now for over twenty years. You get this commitment for finisham, for doam. Why this constitutional review process so important? And maybe you know say how we link up to as well, trapezoid and other calls for reform as well.
Well, as you all know, the constitution, now they regulate, me where sit on there. Waiting, now me powers, what I can do and what I not can do, what in parliament they do and what in parliament not for do. Um, the judiciary and everybody, how would they relate to one another? If you hambogi, you company, you know, we get too many things inside there. Now the, what, what would they call, uh, the supreme document of any state? That we own Bible down there, now in the show, how we the run the state itself. After nearly, um, sixty years, after more than sixty years after independence, twenty years ago, they initiate the idea. Under the APC, for review the constitution. This process, because of lack of commitment, enough initiate. SAPP come, let's have no doam. APC come back, they hangam. Me are not a hangar folk, because now Motaman there they do it. I not see why we for afraid. Because everybody, we know they do and are secret, we they make everybody sit down, just like the trapezoid. Now see, now so we want for do. And we change them, and we put them out there, enough of it secret. So for me, I happy say, SAPP don't make their own input, APC don't make their own input. In fact, now they now the last one we doam. So waiting we get now, actually, now a document, we don't get the highest level of consultation. And we don't get the two main political parties input into that. And now, where we also get this trapezoid, um, the recommendations there, most of them similar to what we want for do with a constitutional review. So we the blend all because we want make grumbling stop. We want make, make the one they way get excuse for the create problem for this country, may stop. Like I say, me own leadership, I the deal with the problems of today, I the support the problems of the future. Deal with this one and solve the other one there, so that future politician and the Motaman in this country will get a life here.
Well, finally, finally, your excellency. The question we want end with, now you call to action to the citizens of Salon. To young people, to different people across the country. Waiting now your message, waiting now, what you the invite me for do for step up? For help you achieve this vision where do I slide so, so eloquently today?
This now family talk, and I want for make sure say, are they talk to the family there now? This, now me, now waiting, I want for say, to every family, where they, and the one day, where they out of here. Waiting, me feel say, I don't get the opportunity for lead this nation before. And I don't get a second opportunity for lead this nation again. I know quite a lot of things, where they work and the one they way not they work. Waiting, how government they succeed, how people then they succeed. Now for make sure say, the people choose the right leader. And when you choose the right leader, you follow the leader until your time done. That way they, you go able achieve the things they want now want for do. So, the call to action, now for really get the buy in of everybody. Everybody where they in the country. Me, they show the direction, but I need winner for follow me, for go in that direction, for more go reach there. And if there are any problems on the way, the box stops at my table, I go take care of that one day, because me not the leader.
With your permission now, your excellency. Unfortunately, we know we take more question, we don't take as many as we can, we don't get this excellency here for three hours. Uh, your excellency, we get the moist update, we now one year into delivery of the big five. I just want ask you now for the honor of Italy, as you go distribute one thousand copies today. So people there we get more questions, so then we get them question and they answer. Yes, sir. Alright, alright, listen, listen. Generally, generally, personally, I don't for don't give you the mic. Listen, because I find you action rude. Listen, listen, I find you action rude and impolite. But, you don't say, it give you quick thirty seconds. And listen, but normally you take this action, say, this kind behavior, it acceptable in the future. Okay? Because now, not to, not to so would they behave, and not to they call land the way his excellency don't talk. But again, the mic layers. And you get thirty seconds, after that we'll take the mic from you.
I really sorry, first of all, for me behavior which is very rough. I'm sorry, Mr. President. Everybody don't ask question, all man they ask different, but nobody not ask about agriculture. So now that myself want ask, but winner allow me. Some of winner there now, you not want this opportunity, but you not know you for doam. Winner sit on your the club. Mr. President, five years you don't rule we, which is fine, I appreciate you, I voted for you. I voted for you. Yes, five years you don't rule. And still, the agriculture sector is poor, here from the mud. You know how much people they suffer for it, right now rest now six Leo's. Allow me, allow me. No, it's not to APC, me now SAPP. Me now from there, SAPP all. Me, SAPP, me also from SAPP, okay? Allow me. Winner allow me. Questions. There's so much for party, please. Mr. President, then this they are buy you, pepper when a this country, then they produce them. Am I a six to Leo's for cook? This country will support for provide and they, you don't rule me for five years.
I, I, I know they got it.
You are about to leave us. What are you they?
Alright, okay. Alright, now settle down. Winner make we settle down. Winner make we settle down, and I allow for let's sit down. Winner make we settle down, everybody listen.
Did you get the question? Did you get the question?
Alright, okay, everybody listen now. Now the question, as I understand them, is say, nobody not talk about agriculture. Me no say, we don't ask at least, so the questions on agriculture. His Excellency don't spend a lot of time. So whether the sister not been they listening, or are just passion, it's okay. Now I make who there, for let we get this conversation. I for don't prefer, listen, you don't ask your question now. I for don't prefer if you use the right channels, the whole setup. Many, nobody back them. Only then sixty questions that then come in on the platform. Visible, also give people the option for send texts, free. Eight one eight, send text, you know, it cost you nothing, for ask your question. So for can I hear, normally, and decide say, now you loud pass we all, so we demand for let you get the microphone. Me personally, I take exception to that. But like I say, the leader, where now his excellency, when I did daddy, now in sailor give you the mic, and you don't talk about food prices and agriculture. So I the get the chance, may just respond briefly before you launch. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, and, um, now a citizen, you get right for talk to a leader. Besides. Besides, now woman. And we need give high place to women. The only thing is that, may we listen?
Now listen, please.
Um, and obviously, me sister or me Peking be the listen. If I, or maybe you late, because where we the camp on this, now me cook one, make people then listen, so you understand what we they do. You that, you said the price of rice still they high. You get for high, because the rest who they get now, now China's man they plant on Pakistan, Japan, they put on a ship, they pay for them. You can I hear, we charge, we not begin produce we own rest yet. I don't know who say he been there, if quite for don't ask this question before I come, because if you don't begin eat rest before this president they come. The only difference is that this president, they give this opportunity because we the open up dialogue. But the same question, if you don't answer, ask come, few years back, maybe, nobody not go even listen to you, because agriculture not been the power we agenda. We be say infrastructure, and we not say the infrastructure. Waiting me don't say I don't, I they do for agriculture, I the make sure say it happen. And make I tell you all this, for embark on a national. Uh, program of that magnitude, not for me, I just talk and the next year, there is price then can don't know. Go now America, may ask for rest. Per, per kg, five, uh, twenty-five kg or ten kg, or go now China, so outside they produce the rest, or go now England, or go Europe. The prices of food don't go up everywhere. Me not go put hand off for you. Now that makes, we are not able put hand off for you, I say, I the make sure say, we government support everybody, so we grow with your food. The rest where they fed for, so now, Koboko, uh, uh. It's in the land there when I help people. Kabuka rest. Where you cook on by midnight, water don't pass market side there. We can now then old, old harvest. We been the plan to your rest. For make we do this, if other people they not been, they disrupt we from twenty, uh, uh, twenty twenty-three. We've been there in the planning process. But we get plenty political disruptions inside this country. When and now, we don't get a plan, we don't, the money, where would they get? They, I not go even tell the minister of finance, say, give me money to have more impact on this kind. Now small money we they take from them, they would go to, we partners the outside. For me, they give you money, and now when I make them get mind, in addition to, uh, energy sector, then give you the eight hundred and fifty million. They say, we know say, where you talk, you they doam. You don't take, uh, education, you don't doam. Now you want go to agriculture, we get mind, give you eight hundred and fifty million, we don't pledge am. And as you the present your projects there, we the make the money available. And not they say, and not they even promises say next year they price the candle. But one thing we are good promises, by twenty twenty, you tell me they left. Salon go they produce enough rice, there will be a quantum leap. So if fine for where we the talk about certain things, they may also, maybe myself also understand. Because this question we ask, if you have that one way, be say, oh, the president don't go bring plenty money. Now, waiting I want to for agriculture, maybe you need for know this. We don't identify areas in this country from the north, they go to the south. When a big place there, we can able accommodate up to them fifty thousand hectares, then can able prepare them. For prepare that one, then there are millions of dollars for put the water control systems and drainage, um irrigation systems. When you don't prepare that one day, then you de able get the private sector, not to government, not to me get for go plan that rest there for you. The private sector both internally and externally, international. Now then they get the car money for say, I de can't take fifty thousand hectares, I plant rest there. And then one day they for me they go there, then go for make sure say roads there for go there. Infrastructure there they, uh, the, the um, um, irrigation system there they, electricity there they. Through the MCC, we don't make arrangement for make sure say they line the way then they pass, it passed on the area they would identify. Now only now, next month, now we de sign the MCC finally. So it look like you want go before, but I go tell you say, now it. Development now an extremely slow process, extremely slow process. For make we become a rice producer and reduce the price, I say you want them, it not go be this year, it not go be next year. But I de tell you say, the arrangement the way we de ban, you go make sure say salon, food self sufficient. In in a very short time, especially going towards twenty twenty-eight. So now that's we de work on, I hope say in future, in future also if I for the car Ali. And listen. Because if you be car Ali and you listen, an officer will be for count to this again. Now you want not be understand agriculture aspect, so we don't take all of this time for explaining it, thank you.
Thank you, excellency. Now maybe you can launch the one year magazine. And I will make sure say I get personal copy as well to the sister because plenty information there as well inside the magazine. On agriculture and everything we don't know big five. In fact, now even agriculture, we show film today same. During the break, we do all film, we show again on agriculture. So I think um it's all good, it's all good. We thank his excellency for where you answer the question. Now we'll launch the magazine.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Minister. Um. I want to say thank you for provide this opportunity for make I engage with the citizens of this country. With the. With the make effort for improve on with democracy. A democracy involve too many things and it's a process. Not for me when I just vote for the president and the members of parliament and local government. But more for now for make that same political group of people engage with to now from time to time. For blow mind, now hurt the democracy. We don't know say now, we sister, you not lad the body uh agriculture business, no so.
Yes.
I need for know that one day, so I need for convince them by me actions so that we produce rice. I go look for me sister and say, you know, ever I want for assure, when I say. Everything where we don't promise, we de deliver. And this opportunity, we not go squander them, we go make sure say we use them to the benefit. I want for say thank you as I take this great opportunity to launch volume one of one year delivery of the big five. This now a great document, we go able plenty, answer plenty question, we will not answer today. Thank you very much for coming.
All right, slowly remain standing for the, for the national anthem and then his excellency will leave. Thank you, excellency. Now we get the national anthem. And I will encourage with this alien as a fellow sing the national anthem loud.
I we exalt the realm of the free. Great is the Lord we have for thee. Family united, ever we stand. Singing thy praise, oh native land. We raise up our heart and our voices on high. The hills and the valleys we have for our glory. Blessing and peace, ever thy own. Land and street love, flowers here are all yours.
I want for say plenty thank you to all the partner that we make this happen, UBA, SLBC, AIV, SLEAK. Star, UNDP, Protect, Media Tech, The Axis, FIA and all the one them. We make sure say we bring this event. His excellency go the parts now. And allow you remain standing as the excellency go left. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, sir.
His Bill explains how these projects support his big five game changers and feed salon initiative.
This company don't come at the right time and for contribute to the food and nutrition security on the feed salon program. The proper management of our marine resources to realize its full potential is of keen interest to my government. And come to in our feed salon initiative within our billion term national development plan.
Minister of Fisheries, Mrs. Princess Duba, highlights the factory's role in improving food security and nutrition. With sardines rich in omega three S.
This is in line with the feed salon game changer and the agenda that was launched by his excellency president you few months ago. The development of the fish processing industry is a major element of our fisheries sector development policy. In addition to the provision of incentive to promote private sector investments in the fish processing sector. We have commenced the work of constructing a fish harbor complex. I would like to thank his excellency president Bill for paving the way for Sierra Leone. To obtain a grant from the Chinese government in the tune of fifty-five million dollars for the construction of fish harbor.
Madame Nene Leby, chairperson of the parliamentary oversight committee. Commanded the investors for creating jobs and boosting skills that are vital for economic growth.